Direct comments to the council, et cetera. So, anybody here has, has all you guests signed in? Is anybody here to speak to us during this public forum? Okay. We'll go on to item six. Item six is the consent agenda. These are typically routine type of things that happen. One of the things that is important to point out here is if you have any corrections to the minutes, we have the minutes on the consent agenda, assuming that they are correct. Okay. First meeting, that's my air. Okay. Agenda number five. We have a resolution to adopt Robert's Rules of Orders as our procedure to run our meetings. In our city ordinance and per Iowa code, we have to approve the way that we're going to run our meetings. So, I would entertain a resolution to adopt Robert's Rules of Orders as our guideline for our procedures.
I'll move to approve the resolution. Everybody should have got a copy of the resolution, but I'll read it. Resolution to adopt Robert's Rules of Order newly revised. Send Robert Rules of Order newly revised shall govern at all meetings of the Polina City Council, except as ordered by Dakota, Iowa, or the ordinances of the city.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I assume ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Carry it, Adam Stitt. Thank you. Okay, on to the consent agenda. Minutes and mileage reimbursement on the consent agenda. If you, and any council member can request any of those items be removed from the consent agenda, in which case they would be, minutes would be corrected or again, discussion to discuss those. Otherwise, if anybody wants to take it off, otherwise I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
You need another one? You want an agenda? One more? Agenda? Who else has one?
Ryan needs an agenda.
Who did you give yours to?
Oh, you didn't have one.
She threw it away.
Oh, you threw away the one I gave you for the house?
No, I did have one. I have all of the other papers, but I don't have an agenda.
No, that was what I left at your house?
Oh, yes, yes.
That's okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Right, hang on to the discussion.
Yep, so just the two items is the approved minutes and the mileage reimbursement of what's on the consent.
Correct. Yep.
What was the old reimbursement? Can I ask a question after it's done? Okay, I just wondered. What was?
All right. Are you, if you're ready to vote for the consent agenda, all those in favor by saying, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Wait till Michelle gets back here for payment claims. You should have a copy of the claims in front of you and, and one additional sheet, green sheet of additional claims from today.
And that you see is a month, please?
Point order. Okay. I entertain a motion to approve payment claims.
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
The proper, the proper way for Robert's Rules of Orders are to make a motion in a second, then discuss the motion and then vote on it, so.
I didn't get that in there.
Any questions? Any other questions on the claims?
What was the, I suppose you're going to know Kelly, the John Deere thing? That cabinet, that I think was installed.
That's fired.
Fired.
It's fired, Portland.
Oh, that's burned. Oh, I should ask Ryan then, huh?
That's, was all budgeted items?
That you needed for that new.
All right, any other questions or discussion on the claims?
So I don't quite understand the Wonderland Theater. What does the city?
Okay. They received a $13,000 grant. So, the construction bill from Hoback Construction was $10,978.05. What was, what we have left of the grant here is $2,095.51. And I have a check from Wonderland Theater for the remaining, for the remainder of Hoback Construction's bill.
So the $2,000 is still up?
Is still up. And, and that's what's left of the grant.
So what did they write the check for?
$8,800 and something.
So that's the city on it?
No.
No, okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carry. Item eight is, you want to talk about the bank journals that you have provided.
Alex and I have got all through the fiscal year now. So, it was quite the task. We're hoping that the next six months will go much quicker, since that's when Alex and I were doing all the entries.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good progress.
Your sleep was nice, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. That's for your information. Number 10, I think the past council already has contracted with Williams and Company to perform the annual examination for a number of years, including the upcoming year. But just to make sure we're on the same page, I would just like us to authorize that to move ahead. If we chose not to have them do it, they would be fine with that. They would not hold us to the final year of our agreement with them. But they're familiar with our books, especially with everything that we've been going through. I think it would be a tough time to make a change, if there ever was a reason to make a change. So, I would entertain a motion to authorize Williams and Company to perform the annual examination of our fiscal year 23 financial statements.
I'll make a motion to authorize Williams and Company to perform annual examination of fiscal year 23 financial statements.
I'll second. Go ahead.
Any discussion?
I'm thinking we're only on the second year this year. It's a three-year commitment, I know.
Okay.
And the first year was really crazy, my last year, so.
Do we have two years left?
Yep.
Two examinations.
Any other discussions? Hearing none, I assume ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carry. Item 11 is just a discussion item, which I put on there. Ordinance number nine, happened in 2018. In our original ordinance, our meetings were the first and third Mondays of the week at 7:30 PM. That got changed to 5:30 PM with this amendment. I just wanted to throw that out there for us to think about. I've gotten some comments from residents of Polina that many work out of town. It's hard to get back into town in time from work. So, I'd just like us to be thinking about that and maybe the next meeting or when we're ready to, to discuss that further, if we should make a change or not. Doesn't have to be Mondays either, but I haven't gotten any comments from people about Monday being a problem. I've gotten comments about 5:30 being a problem.
So, they suggest that the time is better or not?
So, some people liked the 7:30, maybe seven. Others said at least six would be good, maybe 6:30 would be a good compromise.
All over the board.
Yeah, all over the board. But comments have gotten all would be a bit later. Half hour to two hours.
I don't like the idea of starting at seven or 7:30. That's just too late.
So we'll think about that. We'll put it on a future agenda item to take action on that, but we'll think about that. All right. Item 12, I guess I'm an authorized signer per the ordinance, but I need to be an authorized signer with the banks. So I would entertain a mo, a motion to make a resolution to name me Mayor Marlon Charde as an authorized signer with our banks.
I'll make that motion to make a resolution, but you are the, Marlon Charde is the authorized signer of the banks.
I'll second.
Any questions, any discussion? Hearing none, I assume ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carry. Item 13, we have to set depository limits, authorize depository limits with the various banks. So I would entertain a motion for a resolution to approve the depositories and limits as noted here. And if you make the motion, if you would please repeat the information on this agenda item.
I'll move the resolution to approve depositories and limits. I have a state bank, $2 million. Security state bank, $7 million. Savings, State Bank of Primmgar, $2 million.
Any questions, any discussion? Hearing none, I assume ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Carry. Item 14, this was presented to you in a past meeting as a, as a consideration. So, tonight it's on the agenda, so I would entertain a motion to make a resolution to increase employee contribution on health insurance, the family portion, from 15% to 20%.
I'll introduce a resolution to increase employee contribution from 15% to 20% for family healthcare insurance plan.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions, any discussion?
What's the background here?
I mean, recently, it's always been 15%. And a couple of years ago, it went from, our deductibles went up times two.
It was one and two, wasn't it? Now it's two and four.
Now it's two and four. Now we're going up from 15 to 20%.
It only, it only affects Kelly and I.
There's only two employees that it affects.
Yeah. Each, all the singles get it free. I mean, the city covers it. And then on the family, we take off, or they do the single. So theirs is also free, except they pay from their family. And then instead of paying the $1,200 and some dollars that they would, you know, the city covers that, but then they put in a contribution of either 15 or 20.
Of what?
Of the $1,200 and some dollars. Once you take the total of the family minus the single, then you have $1,241.20. And 15% of that is $186.18 a month. The 20% is $248.24 a month. And when I talked to Kent House, he suggested that we leave the singles not being paid, that the city would cover them, and that we were kind of low on the family side. That they were, the families were not paying a whole lot. So, he suggested it. And we did call around different places. Primmgar pays 88% of their single and 88% of the family. Sutherland pays 75% of each. Hartley is an HSA, so that one didn't cover. Or, you know, it's nothing that we're doing. And Samlorn was 100% of both. And of course, it keeps going up.
Well, but they, so if I remember right, the increase on the health insurance, what did that amount to? Was it 7.5%?
Yep, 7.5.
So then that increases.
7.4.
So yeah, that's 7%. That actually gets reflected onto the family, with family paid also. Because it increases theirs.
It increased everybody's.
But just two.
Well, that half to pay.
Yes, just two that have to pay.
Right.
So, it really, in the grand scheme of things, it's not gonna, if we leave it the way it is, it's not gonna make a huge difference on expense to the city for two employees that are on the family, the family plan.
And ours will be going up 12%.
12% where?
Well, the five, or the, we have the seven.
It's made it go up, yeah.
Plus the five that they want to add to the 20%, from 15 to 20. So we'll be going up 12%.
But you have, as a family, you get a bigger help with your, all your people that go in for your medical issues. Whereas, that's why I think Kent said that single is only one person. Where you guys have, whatever you got, your family that's going in for this. So, that's where he said chances are.
But regardless.
Where the bills come from is the family situation.
But regardless, those two have to take the family.
Right.
I mean, the city percentage is going up, and so is the employees' percentage, the same level.
Right.
Right.
So, really, like I was saying, the city's not going to gain a whole lot by increasing it to the 20%.
Well, it comes out of the extra that we're paying. Because we're paying extra on each single person, too.
Yeah. That.
Because they have 7% over total of all.
Yep. Yes, I understand that.
But this is only in regards to the family.
Right, they're the only ones that are getting the extra. Because it would be like $120 some dollars per paycheck, if they get twice a month. And if we go back to the 15, it would be like about 90 something. So it's not big bunches, but it is extra.
So why would we just increase it on the, on the family and not?
I guess because they never have.
Anything.
They never have, but I've seen.
Right.
I've been here 10 years and it's been 50 years.
One of the things I would always recommend is, you know, to, to get information from neighbors. So what's competitive out there? To, to balance, rebalance as you need to. And, and prior meeting, when Kent was here and presented that information, that the recommendation was to, we want to give as good a deal to the employees as possible. We always, but we also have the right to responsible cost sharing between the city and the employer and the individual who's, who's receiving the benefit as part of the compensation package. And Kent just recommended that, you know, what he sees nowadays in this insurance market, 15% co-pay by the family and a, you know, and then 0% co-pay by the employee is, is very low, which just means that the employer, the city, the city taxpayer is just paying more. So we want to take a look at that and just say, what is fair out there in the marketplace?
Between Samlorn and the other council, I feel like we're very little.
Whether 50, yeah, I think Primmgar is like 12% for everything. 75% of them. And they're, the singles pay too. Take some of them, I think.
So, we need to make a decision. I think the, the points are out there. I move, you know, unless somebody has some additional information, we should probably just vote on it and make a decision on where we go with it. Unless anybody else has any, you know, other issues, different issues to bring up. So, I may have to call myself on a point of order. We may have to go back to three. A resolution really requires a roll call vote. I didn't call a roll call vote. This one takes a roll call vote, and then you go back and, and ready to vote on the other three resolution items. But if you're ready to vote, would you do a roll call vote, please, Michelle?
Yes. Steve Heron?
Nay.
Carol Honkamp?
Yay, yes.
Nicole Jacobs?
Yay.
Jean Unrow?
Yes.
Danny Workmeister?
Nay.
Was that a yay or a nay?
That was a nay.
So, three s's, two no's. So, that resolution passes to increase the employee contribution from 15% to 20%. Okay, so, so to catch up with my point of order, again, what's the right way to do this? To go back and do a roll call vote on the other three resolutions?
Do it properly, be great after you see the original motion.
Of course, it's just a voting issue, right? They, they, they were all unanimous.
Right.
So we make a motion to...
Well, I think it's, there's no opposition. We just make a motion in the minutes.
Because basically, we all, they all said yay or nay. We all said yays, so isn't that, I mean, it's like a vote.
You can just make a rotation and then.
Yes. I mean, it's not like it's.
Can't we just say that they passed by a roll call vote? And does a resolution have to have a?
Or, or I suppose we could say that each one's resolution has not been yet voted on because it was voted on not as roll call. We can just do a roll call vote for each one of them, because the other one would be all.
Well, I think this situation, as long as it's clear what we're doing, it's voted as such.
Any opposition to, to changing your vote on I, resolution, agenda item number five, 12, and 13 from a employees vote together to a roll call vote with your name attached to it?
I'll make that motion. If you make that motion, and that's fair, and we're all going to say yay for it anyway.
Sure.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? And just to make sure, we will take a roll call vote on that one. On that motion. Everybody understand the motion?
Steve Heron?
Aye.
Carol Honkamp?
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs?
Aye.
Jean Unrow?
Aye.
Dennis Workmeister?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. My apologies. All right. Item number 15, approve mayor's appointment for mayor pro tem. I have appointed Carol Honkamp to be mayor pro tem. And I would entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
I'll make a motion to approve Carol as the mayor's pro tem.
Second. Any discussion? So, no other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve my appointment of Carol as mayor pro tem? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. And we'll go on to item 16. The oath of office doesn't have to be done, tied in with the item. So, fire department elects their, their own fire chief, and it's our job as the council to approve the election of Ryan as fire chief. So to approve a mo, I would entertain a motion to approve the election of Ryan Harper as fire chief of Polina.
I'll make a motion to approve. The election of Ryan Harper as fire chief. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Carry. All right. Stand up, raise your right hand.
Prescribed oath is, I, Carol Honkamp, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all duties of the office of City of Polina in Polina as now or hereafter required by law.
Thank you. Ryan?
The prescribed oath is, I, Ryan Harper, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all duties of this office of Polina Fire Department in Polina as now or hereafter within.
Thanks, congratulations. Thank you for your service. Item number 17 is to approve mayor's committee appointments. You have a hard copy of those. I'll just quickly read them off, the ones that are here in the back. Public Safety Committee, Jean Unrow and Danny Workmeister. Nuisance Committee, Carol Honkamp and Nicole Jacobs. Employee Committee, Jean Unrow and Carol Honkamp. Parks and Property, Steve Heron and Nicole Jacobs. Finance and Economic Development, Danny Workmeister and Nicole Jacobs. Utilities and Streets, Danny Workmeister and Karen. Airport, Jean Unrow and Danny Workmeister. And Library, Steve Heron and Carol Honkamp. Would entertain a motion to approve those appointments.
Also move.
I'll second.
Any questions, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carry. All right. Item, item number 18, would entertain a, a motion for a resolution designating Polina's newspaper for legal publications.
I would make a motion to adopt a resolution designated The Ballad Times Courier as an official newspaper for legal publications.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Sergeant.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I assume ready to vote. It's a resolution, so we'll take a roll call vote, please, Michelle.
Steve Heron?
Aye.
Carol Honkamp?
Nay.
Nicole Jacobs?
Nay.
Jean Unrow?
Nay.
Dennis Workmeister?
Aye.
So that's three nays, two ayes, that motion fails.
I'll make a motion now to designate The Northwest Iowa Review as the paper for publication of legal notices and reports of proceedings by the City of Polina, Iowa, as required by law for the year of 2024.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, questions?
I think it's unfortunate that we decided to go outside of our towns. And our town is small and we need as many businesses as possible, so just try to shop in town.
What do they bring to the town, though? What do they bring to the town, though?
I could ask the same question back to you, with your view.
Well, you could say I do quite a bit for the town, but I shop local. I'm also a pretty positive person, you know. The Bell Times Courier has been very negative, and we can all say that, they've been pretty negative. And I think with a new council, I think it's time for some positivity, and I think that we can all agree to that.
And I realize that the Northwest Iowa Review is an out of town paper, but I agree with Nicole, I think it's time for a change, and, you know, see how it goes. And we've put up with a lot of crap this past year. I mean, I know it's their job to report the news, but still, we've put up with a lot of stuff.
I agree with both of them. I just feel that last year, we did the same thing, we kind of evaded, and then we decided to support it, and kind of had the same thing that we felt. Just like Jean said, we need the minutes and everything published, the way the meeting is going on, but there was a lot of extra things added that I think it should be up to the residents to decide the size. So, I think that's why I kind of made the motion and thought we'd try something different.
I don't change the minutes.
No, I don't.
And that's what I understood, you just said that about the minutes, and you just, what we publish is what you provide.
The minutes you do fine, but there's a little bit adding to the reports that you write on the paper, it's a half a page, so...
I was just mentioning, you know, it's a new council, so I expected possibly that we could give this situation a year for being some of the issues that have gone with the new council.
Right.
So, that's my two comments, I don't know what else I could say, I think the voters already have it.
Yeah, you know, I think, I don't know what kind of subscription that the Palina residents have to the review, but I think a local paper gives our residents an easier option to get the news. The other thing is, and I mentioned this the last year when we did this, that the Iowa League of Cities does recommend that we use, if we have a local paper, they do, it is their recommendation to use the closest local paper that we have for the publications of the minutes and the legals. That's their recommendation.
Yeah, Steve, in looking at that, I'm not sure if they recommend using the one, they, you have to use one that has local circulation? But, which would both be, both good?
They both do, yeah. I guess that's, you know, what I was trying to get at, I didn't bring it with me today, but I reviewed it last year, and that's what I thought of it.
All right, any new or different comments? I would assume you're ready to vote. There's a resolution also, so roll call vote, please, Michelle?
Steve Heron?
Nay.
Carol Hahnkamp?
Yay.
Nicole Jacobs?
Yay.
Jean Unrow?
Nay.
Dennis Workmeister? Dennis Workmeister?
So, that's three to two, and that resolution passes. All right, Item Nineteen, discuss engineering upgrades of water treatment plant. Kelly has some information for us there.
In order to get funding, we need engineered plans, if anything, I just want this to be on your radar. We have a lot of old equipment and valves that at some point are going to need being replaced. Getting the initial engineering done will help us move forward in the future with inevitable project. Prelim would be in 2024, design would be 2025, and we stretch from that again until 2026, so this is something that's maybe not going to be done tomorrow, and I just kind of want it on your guys' radar that it's something that we're going to need to be looking at in the future. I did get an email from Mike Carr with information on when grants and whatnot are available. He gave a lot of information on the planning, process cost, planning and design loan. There's a zero percent for three years loan you can get just for the planning and design loan. Something for you guys to look over and think about.
And presumably something that you will continue to work on and define, and try to come back with a budget at the right point in time and ask for...
And he's from DGL, right? Could we possibly have a workshop on this sometime?
And he is willing to come.
I think that's a good idea.
He is willing to come and talk to you guys, too, about everything, so...
Okay, great, grants and everything, too.
So, if you would look that over and talk with him and find out what's a good time, timing of a workshop?
Sounds like preferably sooner than later.
It doesn't need to be tomorrow, but yeah. It needs to be...
Maybe Thursday?
Get all the numbers together about that?
Sure.
Wednesday night, you'll be working.
So, that means, yeah, free information is still in Kelly's court, so come back and see.
Question. Since we have committees, you gotta make referrals to committees, because I would assume that Steve and I would probably work with Kelly, if that's what the council was.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, I would take all the help I need, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you're gonna do referrals at them, or?
Let's just do it at this item, let's say. So, basically, with committees, you know, we've had several committees that haven't been terribly active, but we need to do is just get these items right to the committee, to your point, so that we can start working on them. So, I don't think we need a formal referral to be, because it's a committee, so we'll assume it's in your court to... All right, Item Number Twenty, authorize and purchases related to Southwest feeder underground project. So, on this one, I would entertain a motion to authorize purchases related to the Southwest feeder underground project.
Kelly explained what it was today, but she, the rest of council, nobody?
Yeah, Kelly stopped and says, "It's not me today."
Do we want a motion, a second, and then we'll discuss it? So, I'd entertain a motion, first of all, to approve purchases, as noted.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
No, second.
Okay. Discussion, over to you.
Every year, we do an electrical project, put an electrical underground in the past, we had X amount of dollars to work with, and we knew what we had for a budget and what we had to work with. We used to be able to order equipment and wire, and it would be here in a timely manner, that is no longer the case. We have equipment that the current electric project we would like to do, and it is forty-two weeks out. What I'm asking for is permission to order equipment for next year's budget. With the current lead times, they would not be here until next budget. We decided to do the project around the school because it makes the most sense with the project they plan to do. Bearing the Southwest feeder next year would benefit the city, the school, and the community. And I do have, yeah, I mean, I gave everybody a bunch of information on it. There's stuff with forty-two, forty to forty-two weeks, one hundred twenty-eight days, twenty-two to twenty-four weeks. So, most of that stuff I would be ordering would be, we would have to pay, I'd make it so it wouldn't be until the next budget, order the stuff.
So, the challenge of this with the lead times is, we haven't approved the budget yet, we're assuming that there are projects, and as Kelly mentioned, there are projects every year that we need to do.
Normally, the electric has one hundred fifty thousand in vertical every year.
So, he's looking at that kind of ballpark category here to pick within the budget.
I don't have that sheet now, I can get that piece. This one?
Hundred eighty-two, three...
Okay, yeah, here it is, I see it. Okay, one hundred eighty-three thousand, okay. But if we get some grants on that, too, I would hope.
There is a grant out there that we can go for, it's due in the middle of February, I believe. If you can correct.
Sounds good.
So, you're looking to not fund anything up, or do you have any dollars left this budget year that you can buy some of this stuff ahead of time?
I mean, a lot of this stuff isn't gonna, we're not, we don't get billed until we actually get the product, so if we buy, if we order something that's forty or forty-two weeks out, it's gonna be on next year's anyway.
So, there's nothing we can purchase now, if you've got dollars left in your budget?
Yes, there is some stuff, I mean, we could get some of the wire and some of the stuff that's stock items and have it on hand.
Does that work, do I, if I have money left, do I start using it?
Do you have a storage place in upper, whenever you get it?
Everything we have or need to get.
Yeah, as far as the budget, we still have, you know, almost six months left in this fiscal year. We are getting closer to having all the financials and budget comparisons done, so there will be time once we get that done this fiscal year to determine if they want to purchase something ahead of time.
Will you need that engineered for you, or you just know what you're doing?
I believe the term is vertical, you don't need, or I think it's one hundred ninety-two thousand or something before you need it engineered?
So, impression, Kelly, we'll have no more electrical above ground on West Streets?
It would be Broadway, Grossbeck, and Green. Going from the, it starts at the, where Goshen Shop is, on Railroad and, Railroad and Relidge. That blue line is the overhead that's still there. Off that overhead, we'd come down Green, Grossbeck, and Broadway, and then tie it in on Willow Street. So, it'd be a loop feed, which would also help out if, if we have something wrong on one part of the line, we can disconnect and just have that section of line out, and the rest of the line can be fed.
And you pulled some of the wire already, haven't you, on Main Street, round around? Or wasn't that to do with this?
That wasn't, it is.
Oh, okay.
I guess I would just caution you to keep in mind, and keep some cushion in that budget in case we had an emergency. Right, and we still have to have, yeah, we still have to have, I believe it's a million, and we vote for an emergency.
Any questions, discussion?
And like I said, this whole, this whole one hundred eighty-two thousand is that, I wouldn't have to buy all that. Some of that stuff is stock that we can get, we could probably start getting this, on this budget.
All right. Our motion is to authorize these purchases, to order these purchases.
Just the stock items, then, or?
The stuff with the long lead time.
The thing is to get the long lead time items committed to and ordered now.
But you're going to purchase some of the stock? What, are we discussing, or are we authorized, because I thought we changed it?
Nope, we just...
Nineteen was...
We changed the water treatment, I wanted to discuss.
Oh, okay, just for that.
We're authorized.
Now, we're on twenty, okay, there's where you check, okay.
Yep.
Okay, sounds good.
So, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any other questions or discussion, I assume ready to vote? To authorize, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carry.
I just have a general question, Kelly, you want me to help with this, either?
I can, yeah.
So, we refer that to you, as well, as you said, there's a grant in here for this, we'll refer this right back to you guys, too, if you have any to look at. Okay. Reports. So, I wanted to start out by just saying thanks to a lot of people under my report. Thanks to the council members and mayor who just finished their terms, that was Jay, Lexi, Jean, and Brenna, I mean Brenda, Brenda, sorry. To our new and re-elected council members, Danny, Nicole, and Jean, to our continuing council members, Steve and Carol, and also, in particular, residents that ran for council and mayor that weren't elected, Linda Hightus, Kim Myers, Jay Bootson, John Ely, and Steve Heron, and for our residents that got out and voted, had to turn out for this year. As I begin this term, I'm apprehensive, but I'm truly grateful for the support and the words and encouragement I've received. I hope that we can continue the enthusiasm in our community, involve a lot more people. Our committees, we have, by ordinance, we have to have two council members on a committee. I'm hoping that we can enlist some resident participation in those committees, get some additional work, shared with them, get their ideas, get them involved. I would say if we could just get everybody on board in town, we'd have everybody taken care of, because we're all working for the same thing. We've got incredible volunteers and businesses in town, we have to be really thankful for that. The focus on the challenges that, especially the existing, the continuing council members, you know about that. Number one is our financial reports. There have been circumstances that have happened in the past that unfortunately have taken a lot of time and effort away from a lot of the things that we want to be doing day to day. It's kind of exciting that Michelle and Alex are close to having, you know, things done, our monthly financials, everything entered. As you mentioned, they're now into the era where it's, they have been doing the transactions, so it's their own work, so they know it's done. First of all, it's done correctly, some adjustments always need to be made. Financial reports, but then we'll definitely look at, I think, our infrastructure, what's the current condition of our infrastructure? What's our sanitary sewer, what's our storm sewer? I hopefully will implement some more proactive type of maintenance, flushing water mains, flushing out the sewer systems, et cetera. So, financial reports, infrastructure, enhance community pride. What do people see when they first come to this town? Highway Ten, Main Street, and then start working up there to take a look at, a fresh look at, you know, what we can do to increase the appeal. And then go into our neighborhoods, how do we get neighbors? It'd be fun to have neighborhood competitions, like let's have ward, the quarters, let's see who can fix up their quarter of the town and get together and work together on that. At the forum, we talked to some about being good and helpful neighbors, and how can we all work together? We live in a small community for a reason, we live in town versus out in the country for a reason, we really like the community, and we can help each other out with that, so... That's just some of the things, and what's daunting to me is there's a lot to accomplish, it's going to take time, effort, lots of energy, patience, and I hope everybody's just with us on that to, number one, push us, but number two, be patient with us, as long as we're moving in the right direction. So, that's really my thought process as we come into this new year. Coming up, we've got the fiscal year 2025 budget that we have to have done in the next few months, and certified with the city. It's like, that's bizarre, fiscal year 2025, that's July twenty-four to June twenty-five. So, we'll be working on that, Michelle has already sent out requests for information from the various departments in town to submit their budget requests, so that may as a consequence start working on those. And then, one of the things I wanted to mention, so that the residents knew that all of the city council members, and I, and Kelly, are all participating in the Iowa League of Cities Municipal Leadership Academy. It's a three-session academy. We took one in December, we've got one this week, that's actually, each one of them are three parts, so there's three sessions. Within each session is three separate parts. So, all you council members, remember, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of this week is session number two on each one of those three days. So, you should have emails on that, if you want to have that on your calendar or anything. So, to give you a kind of idea, what's the part number one, session number one was effective city councils, budget and finance, municipal operations. Part two was interesting, you got elected, now what? The city budget and basics of planning and zoning, that's the one that's happening this week. And then part three is in April, economic development, community betterment, and acting strategically. So, we're kind of excited to all be working through that together to help us... So we're kind of excited to all be working through that together to, to help us work through that process. And that is my report for the night. Well, one other thing I want to mention, just in case anybody's wondering. At last council meeting, Danny wasn't able to be there for the oath of office. Danny has taken his oath of office at the city hall here on December 27th, so that's done as well, so.
So he's legal?
He's legal.
I don't know about that. I did take my oath.
I know, because I asked him, I said, ooh, we could probably get that on here. He goes, ah, he's done.
All right. Kelly, to you.
We basically got the stump grannies cleaned up. Me and Caden have been working on the Southwest feeder underground project. We have been doing some equipment maintenance, planning on putting some dirt in some of the stump grannies this week, filling those holes in. Do have, I gave you guys a paper. Caden, he has two exams and a final left, and then about 1,000 hours of time he's got to accumulate before he's done. But as far as the testing going, he did about four years of testing in about a year and a half, two years, so he's, he's moving very well. It's just that those hours are just taking a long time to get it to accumulate, so.
Is it going to be like hot ones?
So many hot hours and so many.
But he could go to other towns maybe too and help, well, that, or if they would need help, that, I know you were working with Brimlar, but that would help him use hours.
So are the hours that you're spending on this project, the Southwest feeder, you know, do those count?
Yep.
And then it'll be a journey then?
Yep.
And you guys are still planning on your water sewer, ice tee, which ones?
Yep. Josh is taking this, this month and I'll be taking mine next month for the base water.
So that other guy, you sure, he's already started?
Yep, he's been covering everyone's day, so. He's here for about 15, 20 minutes, so.
Takes a little longer to drive here.
Yep.
All right, any questions for Kelly? Ms. Michelle, you have anything else?
I don't want to say anyone has any questions for me.
Any council comments?
First, maybe you did a good job, I thought.
Thanks, a couple sampoos there.
One thing I'd like everybody to think about is the public forum. And, you know, I think off agenda items need to be discussed in that public forum. And I'd encourage you to think about allowing our citizens to actually speak at the time that their item comes up. Because unless I take really good notes, I'm not going to remember at the time the public forum that that individual told us what was going on. When we get to the item, we try to translate that. So I think they should.
If they have an agenda item, that then.
If they're on the agenda, but not just general public.
Just not a general, okay, if they want a specific, I see what you're saying.
And I noticed myself, even when I came to the council meetings before electing, we would get to the item that, you know, I might have said kind of against, but by the time we got to the item and we had discussion, I would have had another kind of, and I would have liked to have got that out, but of course, definitely.
We're down.
That latitude, so. So that's something to think about for future council meetings. That's pretty much it there saying, so I'd like you to think about that.
Okay.
When I was on the council previously, we had in our packets on certain items explanation. Okay, we probably have that.
Yep, we did too for a while.
We did, yes, they all did.
Okay.
Yep.
So I would encourage you and the mayor and the clerk to look at that and see what can be adjusted up because it really helps quite a bit to understand some of the issues and maybe overtake, ask the right questions. Another thing, I'd appreciate, maybe it's too early in our financials, but can we get a printout of what's actually in, in each fund or approximation?
Soon. She's probably getting close to that.
Yeah, getting close to that.
But that would be, to me, would be beneficial.
Yeah, we'd get a budget before.
You know, help the budget.
And what's been spent so far?
So that's in the motion there? That'll be, when you get to the right point, that'll be.
Yep, unfortunately.
Well, I don't know that it needs to be perfect as long as it's close, right?
Yes.
Because, you know, $10,000 each way. And I can do any research on this and I don't know if you did part of it. We had talked about, do you have a resolution or a motion? Doing research on that?
A, a little bit, yes.
So we're doing it all right?
I figure all right.
Okay.
As long as I do roll call votes.
That's okay.
Because we do, we do roll calls on resolutions and on ordinances, right?
Correct.
And you have all your pretty little notes or your numbers on them now, starting the new year.
So the second to last thing, like literally, would you consider is possibly having a prayer as part of our starting the new year?
I think that's a good idea.
That puts.
Yeah.
I thought of that tonight.
So something, again, to think of. And then the last song, last thing, and the reason we're addressing that, because we need to go through the caucus, was on January 15th. Republicans are up at the school, high school of Harley and, and actually we, in Primm Garden, the same year.
That's on the 15th.
That's on the 15th, and they, that's why we.
Meet on 16th, yep.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Council comments? Committee reports, we're just in transition from last year's to this year, so I don't think anybody had, nobody mentioned that they have a committee report. Department reports, please, Nate, anything?
Nothing.
Brian?
Not really. I'll have a full year interview for the change for everybody.
And a budget probably.
And a budget.
I think you did one last year, but you maybe want to change it a little bit or maybe?
Yeah, we're, I have another meeting, so as long as this doesn't take long, I'll be on time.
Okay.
So you'll be here from ambulance? What was it, were you done?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We're here from ambulance, library.
Just, we're checking our budget. Is there a firm date? I didn't get an email about.
January 10 was the date that we wanted your budget information. Oh, I think that's.
Okay, and then, yes, we just added our board members and gave it out through the last month, so hit the ground running.
And airport. I don't know if I can do this. I'll, I'll let you have a pass this time, but.
I just want to know if you are aware of the compressed budget timeline issued by, enacted by the state this year?
Yes, yeah, we are. Yeah, they extended one thing and then they compressed everything up.
Probably gets it just like over, because we are here.
All right. Just before I entertain a motion to adjourn, reminder at the bottom, our next meeting, as Danny mentioned, is on Tuesday night, again, the 16th, because the caucus is on Monday night. And I guess it's not much of a thing, but we don't usually shift.
I don't know. You guys have a?
No. It's not, it's not more than paying danger for the poll, so. Anyway, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. 6:31. Five, yeah, 6:31. We had a little bad, we fucked up.
Oh, I've got Saul.
I bet everyone heard.
The other ones I got.
Okay, I got most of them.